Thank you very much. All right, item 234, winter moratorium extension, National Grid is the applicant. Two projects, one for Wilmington Road, one for Middlesex Turnpike. Come on up.
Mr. Chairman, we have Tom Hayes joining us virtually if the board has any questions for engineering.
All righty.
Unmute him or just leave him muted for now?
All righty, my-
Into one of these, just because of the microphones. Thanks.
There you go. Why don't you introduce yourselves and turn the floor over to you.
Yep, so my name is Nick Pepe. I'm a construction supervisor with National Grid on the gas side overseeing the gas main replacement for the Wilmington Road project spanning from approximately Chester Street to just beyond Sarah and then also on Middlesex Turnpike going from Terrence Hall Ave up to, the address we have is, I think, 25 Network Drive. It's the driveway there for the new Oracle building. So both projects were pretty far along in, so we just kind of wanted to come in here and see if the possibility of an moratorium extension on both projects. For the Wilmington Road one, that project, we actually, we had, are looking at actually being able to complete it entirely, weather permitting and everything, this Friday. So that would just be a two-day extension past the moratorium of the 15th, maybe possibly even to Monday to also just give us maybe ourselves a little cushion just for final restoration items. And then we would be out of that neighborhood's hair for hopefully Knock'em Whatever.
Yeah.
But yeah, that would be, that would allow us, doing so would allow us to abandon, eliminate the leak-prone pipe in that neighborhood. We've also already completed the relay in Pine Glen Cutting Lane and Gardner. So doing, like I said, doing so would eliminate the leak-prone pipe in that neighborhood and in the main drag there.
Okay, and Middlesex Turnpike?
Middlesex Turnpike has been a little bit more of a hurdle for us. We are just trying to install as much pipe as we can, given the time of year and what's going on. Part of the hurdle that we ran into was when the road was widened however many years ago between Terrence Hall Ave and Middlesex Turnpike Extension, some of the dimensions weren't all transferred over correctly. So we've just had to do a lot more investigative work and preparation in the main installation process. So if possible, I mean, we'd be looking to see whatever, an extension for whatever we could get. We're trying to just get the pipe installed in Middlesex Turnpike from the point we're at, we probably, after this week, we'll probably have about 850 feet left and it's be after the intersection of Middlesex Turnpike Extension up to that driveway entrance to the new site building there for 25, I think right now it's Blue Sky Drive or Network Drive, I forget which one it is. But we're kind of just chipping away. The crew's actually making really good progress and that's just been at night, given that we are finishing up the Wilmington Road project and we just finished up the Birch, a project we had on Birchcrest Street. I think that might be able to give us an opportunity to try to shift our work to days. So that would allow us with, you know, coordination with the DPW that we could work five to six days a week as opposed to the four nights a week and also try to bring a second crew in to help with the production.
All right, Nick, thanks. Let me open it up to questions from the board. Start down here, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 850 feet, how long would it, does it take you to put in 850 feet?
Conservatively, 10, 11 days or so. There's some days where we can have 80, average 80 feet a day. There's been nights where we've gotten 120 to 160 feet. So without kind of trying to toe the line, I'd rather give you the lower number than higher.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Nick, any questions?
At this time, no. I would like to hear from Tommy Hayes if he has anything to add, but other ones, no.
All right, let me go this way. Joe, any questions?
Well, we've gone through these before. We've actually extended some of the other things that have come in the past over the years that I've been here, but we always put a deadline on it. So like Mr. Priest also, I'd like to, you know, see what Tom has to say about it. We have done a couple of these in the past, so once Mr. Hayes gets done telling us what's going on, that would be great for myself. I might have some questions for him later.
Yeah, I also want to hear what Mr. Hayes says.
All right then, why don't we, why don't we do that then? Tom, if you get a moment, sort of give us your take on this request.
Sure. We have a moratorium-
So as they go, pretty much they're buttoning up the trench every night. So, you know, we don't see a problem. So if we get a free storm earlier than usual, they're also to go, they're also to close it up and go home for the season.
Okay, Tom, I see Nick nodding his head over here. I think he fully understands what you're, what you're driving at. And, you know, Tom, I know you mentioned the importance of the project and I know we've got a couple of brand-new buildings under construction up there that are going to rely heavily, I believe, on sound infrastructure down there. So I think it's kind of critical that we try and, try and make that happen.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And the project on Wilmington Road was, they're trying to resolve an issue where they kind of had a leaky pipe up there, a leaky older pipe, and if I'm not mistaken, I think you guys just need to connect a few more households up to the new pipe. Is that where-
We actually made some progress. We have, all the houses have been transferred over to the new gas main, so everybody is up and running on the new plastic. The only items we have remaining are connections to the existing mains at the side street on Sarah Street and at our scope of work at the end. I don't want to say it's right around number 102, 104 Wilmington Road, so that's when we'll be, that final connection. We make that final connection and then we abandon the existing main, which is like primarily leak-prone pipe, a lot of bare steel, some coated steel, but it's definitely been problematic over the years.
All right, Nick. All right, Mike, let me go circle back to you then.
No, if it's, you know, it's not ideal, but if, I mean, to get the project done and get them moved on to other things, I'd be in favor of it.
Okay, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, two weeks enough? Is two weeks enough for them in your estimation, being, done this before?
Well, at their production rate, two weeks should be fine, but I think maybe give a little more. I mean, the good thing is, is the winter. You know, we don't want to come off and all of a sudden you have like, you know, four or five weeks of these alone.
Okay. Nick, I'll ask you the same question. You think, you think two weeks is, from what Mr. Hayes just said, two weeks is enough? Or do you need the third week in there? I'd like to see the project get accomplished before the major snow comes, but I completely understand with the snowplows and the metal grates and all that kind of being buttoned up every night. So is that something that you would look, look to do with, say, three weeks?
Truthfully, it's probably going to, yeah, take us three, maybe a touch more. The plan that we would like to do at least is get the new main installed and activated in Middlesex Turnpike. So that would include, we would connect to the existing pipe, there's one in front of Terrence Hall Ave in front of the fire station there, and then connect to the existing pipe in Middlesex Turnpike just after the driveway. So, I mean, conservatively, it'd probably be about two weeks to get the main installed and then probably another week, week and a half to get those connections in. Once those connections are completed, then we are looking at, I could just focus 100% of our work on the in-property work, working with the contractor, and we, which should hopefully be done with the main on Middlesex Turnpike.
Okay, let's just say, just for conversation's sake, we have a pretty good snowstorm between now and then. Do you still keep on with the project? Do you stop completely because of the snow that we've already accumulated at that point?
Based on the snow and the town's request, we would shut down the street and then we would shift our focus to in-property, provided that it would work adequate with the contractor.
Tom, does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, it's a good plan.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Nick, with, well, first off, thank you for like being knowledgeable about the project and having clarity around it. Sometimes we don't always get that and I think it makes it not confusing for us to come to a conclusion.
Sure.
With Thanksgiving being next week though, what does your work schedule look like next week? Because if we're talking about three, maybe four weeks and you've got days off a week for the crews, that's going to push us further into December. So I just want to understand what next week looks like for your crews and how we can, what a date looks like for us so we can, because like Mr. Moretti said, I'd like to help you get this done, but I also don't want to say, ah, just, you know, whatever until the end of the year, right? Like we should put an end date.
Yeah, not at the expense of the town. I understand, yeah. So typically around the holiday season, we would only probably work Monday, Tuesday, sorry, for Thanksgiving. Wednesday, we usually work pretty closely with the cities and towns in surrounding areas where Wednesday is strictly like a no digging, cleanup only and be out of there by noon at the latest because we want also to be cognizant, heavy traffic, people traveling for that, it's a big travel holiday and stuff like that. So we would be, you know, no digging by, on Wednesday, out of there by noon, pull in equipment, stuff like that, or lace in the case of Middlesex Turnpike, stockpile it somewhere where it's definitely well out of the way. We could probably, in touch with the contractor on the, on the site at Oracle, we can use somewhere up there. And then we wouldn't return until the following Monday. So I believe that's the 27th?
Yep. Yeah, so you'd be working 20, 21 and then hold, start back on 27. So we'd be extending, I mean, three weeks at that point, I think, puts you at December 15th, right? Which is a month from the cutoff date. I mean, do you feel like you could have it done by then?
Weather permitting?
That's a big window for us, like I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, we'd make a strong push, you know, again, too, like we've, we've already done a lot of test pitting in the remaining span that we have. So we have a, we have our slot, we have a location, probably where we're going to end up and go. So also too, like I said, if we can get a second crew in there to try to help expedite the production and stuff like that. Another major help this too is if we can, even if it's coming back from the Thanksgiving holiday, if we get on to days, it's, it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot simpler and easier, I think, from a, from a resource standpoint also too for ourselves and also, you know, paving and restoration and whatnot, I think you get a better product during the day.
All right. Now, if I, sorry, may I continue?
Go ahead.
On a roll here apparently. If I said, okay, hey, can you do it in two weeks, meaning you've got from today through the 17th, two days next week, and then two weeks, which puts you at December 8th?
It might be tight, I would say. It would probably, probably be, it would be a tough, because I mean, also too, pending if there's any, any rain days and whatnot, kind of try to be a little bit cognizant of just weather days on our end also.
Sure. Yeah, okay. I mean, I don't want to make any recommendations I want to keep discussing, but, you know, I mean, I think if we, if we can give them to the 20th for Wilmington Road so they can button that up and then discuss what we're thinking for Middlesex Turnpike, I don't know what the board feels in terms of how many weeks.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Nick, I'm, I was in agreement with you on the 15th, but here's- I was going to see if we could make a conditional approval for December 15th that could be withdrawn or revoked if the DPW deems the snow to be, to be too much of a problem and cut it off, so, yes, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, engineering has provided the board with about five conditions in the backup that they would like included in any approval of an extension. I think it will cover all those issues, Mr. Tiggas, in terms of the snow and the, and the paving and, and all that.
Okay. Yeah, I saw, it says once the snow falls, but that could be, like if it was a dusting as opposed to a six-inch snowstorm, but I'm willing to, I'm willing to go to December 15th because then we get the rush for the Christmas shopping season, that's a busy area. I'd be willing to go to the 15th with the five conditions that the DPW has in there. I know it's important, I'm just trying to balance it, we've never really gone that far, but, so I'm, I'm willing to throw out a date out there to see if anybody's on board with it.
Anybody want to follow up on Jim's recommendation?
I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we should go ahead and make an approval for both of them as long as we put these five conditions that are on this backup in there and Mr. Hayes is okay with all of that. You shake his hand.
That's a good plan.
I'm sorry, just for clarification also, for the Wilmington Road, the final connection that we are going to be making on, in front of number 102, that would have to be a plated opening, I guess, would that be a variance to one of the conditions or just to kind of verify if I let the guys know that for this Friday, if they're going into it, they have to backfill it and then re-excavate it Friday? Does not matter to me, I just wanted to make sure that, I wasn't sure what the, with those five notes.
We'll do this, you ready? Tom?
I think we have some good weather, supposed to be in the 50s and 60s this week, so I don't know if we'll see any snow, but we don't have any. So that should be fine, keeping the place there until the end of the week.
Okay, okay, perfect. Yeah, that'll be, after, after Friday, there shouldn't be any plates regardless, so. Especially on that job, that job 100, should be 100% wrapped up by the end of Friday.
But you have, you have, you have a copy of Tom's IDPW conditions, right?
Yes.
Five conditions noted, okay? So it sounds like, you know, first powerful storm, we're all done, we have to, have to shut it down.
Yeah, we'll hike up, get out of there, out of everybody's way.
Jim, let me circle back to you. I know you, you sort of put it out there in a motion to, for an end date. Are you, you want, are you stuck on that or are you?
Oh, well, no, I was not stuck on it, I was just thinking, it's like two weeks before Christmas, but if, and according to Nick, it would, plenty of time, so that's the only reason I said that date, but I, it's, I'm not stuck with that date. I don't, I mean, if somebody else has a better date or a different date, I'd be okay with it too.
I think what I'm hearing is, the board is okay with the request, provided that these five conditions are adhered to as, from DPW.
All right, I won't, I won't put a date on it then.
Okay. All right, it's, it's not about right, my, I don't mean to be speaking for anybody, no, so. Is that your, is that your motion then?
Yes.
Okay. With the five conditions.
I'll make the motion with the project is complete. We're not going to put a date in there, right? What, five conditions that the DPW has put in there on both sites.
Anything further on this discussion?
One more thing is that we do have the-
I think we need a date.
So that's wrong. Because we do have two meetings between now and December 15th, so if something were to come back up, we could always extend or end it or whatever if something went wrong.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with a date somewhere.
A date, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll make that motion. Go back to Jim's.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve it till-
We're going to get to you, Nick, don't you worry, we're going to get to you.
Make a motion, approve up until, the extension up till December 15th, including the five conditions that the DPW has in there.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Anything further on this agenda right now? Big guy, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go, Nick. Thanks for coming in and I appreciate your knowledge on this topic, otherwise very-
No, it's, no problem. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, item, item 235 is a public hearing. The, the notice has been published online and in various media outlets in, in the Burlington area. I would look for approval from the board to waive the reading of the motion and approve it as, as presented in the backup.
So move?
Second.
Move in a second, anything, any questions? Big guy, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, there we go. Gentlemen, oh, there you are, you're already there, thank you. Beat me to it. Let me introduce yourself and turn the floor over to you.
Yep, good evening, my name's attorney John Moretti in Demarcus Law Offices. With me is Varsha Patel and Cornell Patel. We're here on behalf of Harry Coupa Inc. and we're applying for a package store beer and wine license to be exercised at 85 Wilmington Road. Currently, Varsha runs the store, known as Town Pantry, with, with her family, current nephew Cornell here, and they're seeking to add beer and wine as a item to, to the store to, to purchase. As I met with the liquor committee a few weeks ago, the intent here is not to make this all beer and wine, it's going to be a convenience store with the back portion of the store for a beer and wine cooler and a wine rack. So it's about 20% of the total square footage of the, of the store itself. There'll be about three or four employees, it's, it's a family-run store, Varsha here is tip certified, the employees will be tip certified. They will use an ID scanner to help combat underage alcohol sales and they're able to, have a point-of-sale system too that helps and remind them to check IDs. The store hours for the convenience store is 6:30 to 9:00 every day. For alcohol sales, it will be 8:00 AM to 9:00 Monday through Saturday and 10:00 AM to 6:00 on, on Sundays. So with that, any questions you may have, I welcome those.
Okay, very good. Well, let me start with the subcommittee here from you gentlemen.
Mike, you want to go?
Oh, you can.
Thank you. Well, we, we met, everything looked in order, there was nothing that would be out of the inordinate. There was a set of plans that we looked at, that we had, that showed the, showed the back of the store. We went over the tip certification, we went over the hours, we went over just about everything we could possibly go over and me and Mike had talked about, there's really no reason to say no to this. So I don't, you guys have a different opinion, a different questions or whatever, but we did sit down, we did talk to them and everything looked good.
Mike?
Yeah, one thing I'd add, one of the things we stress to them is the hours that we're allowed to serve, sell beer and wine, and they're different than their total hours and we found out how they're going to like delineate the, the racks where the wine was and they'd lock up the coolers with the beer so they understand our town rules and regulations that are going to follow it. So everything looked good to both of us.
Very good. Go this way, Jim.
Just one note, being a new applicant, the Burlington Police Department does do undercover stings, just so you're aware that they will try to send someone in at some point and want to make sure you're in full compliance and just letting you know that we, we do test all of our, so, all of our licenses. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A slight impasse, maybe somebody could talk me out of it. You know, we try to, at least this board in my time, has said, okay, like where's the line between convenience store and, you know, other types of stores that also sell alcohol, beer or wine? And so I guess I have to ask the question is like, is this that slippery slope to then every convenience store in town asking for a license? And where do we draw whatever line we choose to draw? And does that line, I don't want to say matter, but I guess how permanent is it with the flexibility of the permits of our seats most of the time? I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm also, there's a certain hesitancy that I guess I experienced when I reviewed my backup materials this weekend in that like the last couple applications, you know, were a supermarket that were, was asking for it or, you know, the, the other store on Cambridge Street that, you know, was angling for a specific experience. You know, so I guess I'm trying to, I'm, this is extreme of consciousness, I'm speaking out loud right now in the hope that someone on the board can kind of help me frame this a little bit better in my mind, because otherwise I'm seeing it as a convenience store and then the question becomes is where's the line on any other convenience store that wants to have a beer and wine license in town?
All right, let me swing over there.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I, I do believe this is our last beer and wine package store license available, so if that impacts the board's decision at all about further proliferation, I mean, there's always an opportunity for the state to provide us more in the future, but as of right now, I do believe that that's our last package store license, so.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's my fear is every time we wind up in the, you know, this is the last one, the state turns around and deals out a bunch more licenses to us and I'm like, oh, great, now we've got more licenses to deal with. So I don't know, I, I hear you're saying, Paul, but it's a, it seems like a road that keeps getting, getting extended.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only I can say to this is that it, one of the reasons why that I was in favor of it, it is our last one to give away unless like Mr. Segre said, that we, we get more from the state. I think in the meantime, I think it's our job to sit down and discuss, okay, where are the guidelines now if we're going to get more?
Right.
And I think you're right, I think what you are expressing is, is a feeling that I think we all have, like how many of these do we have to have in town and how many are we going to have? Now, do we come up with a theory of, okay, there's one here, there's one here, that's a thousand yards, you really don't need to, right, then that spot? But then again, you look at it like you can't determine on what other stores open and this, alcohol's different for me, alcohol's a big difference. So I think that now that, if this does pass tonight and we do go ahead and go forward this, now if the state does give us more, we can sit down as a board and discuss, okay, this is getting to be too many, everyone in town is looking for one, now you're going to put one across the street from every other one in town, which we have quite a few. Now we can determine whether or not we want to allow that. So that was my reasoning behind, one of the reasonings behind it was because it was the last one to give away.
Sure.
And we didn't have to go about this anymore. Now if the state decides to give us more, then it's our job as a select board to look into this and go, okay, we're getting too many of them. That, that's one of my reasonings. I don't know if you've expressed the same feelings, but that was one of the reasons why.
I think, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I had the same feeling that this is our last one and I don't think we're at the point where we're saturated with them yet. I think if the state were to turn around and give us five more, then we'd have to sit down as a board and kind of set some real firm guidelines and guide, and rules on how to proceed. But as of this point, I mean, the store is on Route 62, it's away from all of our other ones, it's the last one we have and if it will help their business thrive, then I'm, I'll be for it and that's why I'm for this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Plus, there was one there before. Was there a package store?
Eastfield Liquor Store there.
Oh, that's right, yeah, there was a package store before. So that was one of my other reasons, I forgot to mention that when I was going through my little spiel.
That's right.
That's all I have to say.
Anything further? Nick, you got a follow-up or?
I have no follow-up, no.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item or anybody, no, yes, sir, come on up.
Who would you like me to do it?
Come right up here, next to this gentleman at the, the end here. Mike, can we grab my chair?
I have to go to the-
How are you doing?
Good, how are you tonight?
I'm killing hard to go. I live on 136 Wilmington Road in Burlington. I've been a resident since 1977 and I've also been a police officer for 43 years. And I'm here to speak for Town Pantry. I think, you know, we all understand you get town liquors down on Cambridge Street. They don't really have too much parking down there and a lot of times it's kind of dangerous for, for anybody going down Cambridge Street, turning into town, town liquors. There's a lot of confusion and people coming the other way, see the cars turning, they rush, can have a lot of accidents. I know Wilmington Road is busy because I lived there, but they can a larger parking lot, you know, there's really no danger of people waiting to go into that parking lot, no matter which way they go. So I think it would be more convenient for the residents around the area, especially with the holidays coming up. And that's my take on the whole situation.
Okay, all right, well, good points and then thank you for sharing them tonight and thank you for your service.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else in attendance? Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody, my name is Jean Lane. I'm a resident here of Burlington and I've known the Patel family for quite a while now, they're very reputable people. I do patron the Town Pantry many times. I do patron the Town Pantry many times. Plenty of people come in there looking for beer or wine at numerous occasions. I think it'd be an ideal place to sell that, because there's plenty of parking. You're not in a busy area. And I just think it would be an ideal place to have a beer and wine facility. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Good to see you, by the way.
Where do we know you from? Have you been in town a long time? Where do we know you from? You've been in town a long time?
Not as long as you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on this agenda, right? In the room or online? I'm not seeing any. So with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion from Joe, second. From, do you have anything further on closing the public hearing? Bing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. As to the... The agenda, right?
I'll make a motion to approve a beer and wine license package store at 85 Wilmington Road, Town Pantry.
Second.
Motion and a second. Anything further on this item? Bing none, all in favor?
Wait a minute. I just wanted to add something before we vote.
Yes.
If I may.
Please.
I'd like to add that I strongly encourage the board that if we do get more license from the state, we do take a hard look at where they go. I think that we're at an inflection point in town. And I think that if we're still here when that happens, we should be making that decision very, very carefully and mindfully. That's all.
Yes.
Excellent. That's a good point.
Okay, let me try that again. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
A pause?
Aye.
Motion carries for the one. There you go. Congratulations, folks. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
We go.
Either one.
Either way. Tell him there's an elevator.
Elevator this way.
There's an elevator right down here.
All righty. Okay. Item 236, citizens' time. Anyone here for citizens' time?
I can barely hear you back here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Arthur, I'll speak up.
I'm sure I don't need a microphone.
Yeah, well.
For those who don't know me, I'm Arthur McDonald. I spent in Burlington for 53 years in the culturally deprived section of Burlington, as we call it.
Say that again. Did you say the culturally deprived section?
Maybe I moved here. I was told I moved into the culturally deprived section. If you look at town, if you look at town meeting, there isn't a single rat from the Windmere section. A member of the town meeting board. We had to make, obviously, because of these... I took it right out of the town report. I was shocked. There was no representation.
Okay.
Anyways, I'm here because of this sign here. I'll explain it. I was a manager for 35 years. I've managed some pretty huge companies. 250,000 square feet, tax distribution. 150,000 square feet in computers. Plus, I've been 10 distribution centers across the United States. So I know how to manage. One of the things I learned, one of the big successes in managing is very simple. You take your desk chair and you put it in the closet. And you manage a lot better on your feet than sitting in your butt in an office. Now, that's the situation we have going here. These signs have been put into my neighborhood. And the planning was less than desirable. I couldn't think of an appropriate word. I could think of a lot of swear words to use, but that's probably the only appropriate one I could find. We're not managing the signs going up in town. Now, other parts of DPW, I think they do a great job, but they're ignoring signs. Let me give you an example. I got two of them. I'll put one on this side. And I'll put one on this side. Tell me what's wrong with that sign? And you go buy it every day. I go buy it every day. It's on Wind Street. It's near Seas Street. Now, what's wrong with that sign?
Arthur, we're not here to answer questions.
Well, I'm...
We're here to hear your...
It's right here. Making a point. If you, you see where the crosswalk signs are? You see where the signs that cross here? You see them? They're 100 feet from that crosswalk. Any kid walking down the road on Wind Street, and he isn't intelligent enough to ignore that sign, will cross right there on Wind Street. And it's been there for years. And there's something wrong when you're not doing your job right for letting that sign stay in place. It could end up in a lawsuit. Now, what got us here today? They start installing signs in our neighborhood. This is Wildmere Ave. It's a dead end. This is Harriet. It's one of the fastest streets in our culturally deprived area. This is New Bridge, also very fast street. This is where the school buses stop. We had a bang to have four stop signs put in there, because they were blowing right through that intersection. Now, what's missing today on that intersection? You can't miss it. It's the only one that doesn't have to cross here. The most dangerous street in Windmere has nothing to control people crossing the street. There's something wrong with that. That goes back to lack of planning. That's wrong. What we're trying to do is get the sign down from here. There's no need for those two signs, because it's a dead-end street. Yet they put them up in spite of the fact that we asked them not to do it. In spite of that, some David came and took that sign and threw it up, threw it up the lawn. Cops showed up at my house and accused me of doing it. That could have ended up... Hey, ever watch YouTube? Would cops come to a door?
Can't I have?
Fortunately, I'm excellent with the cops in Burlington. I got a phone call from the police department saying, would I step out in the street? That opens up the door for me to say nothing to a plate. I don't want to do that. All we're trying to do is, one, is get this straightened out. We don't want these signs here. We want them out. I can't tell you to put signs there, but it doesn't make sense that they're not there. It's the most dangerous intersection. I see kids blowing through that every day on motorbikes, on bicycles. The school bus stops there in the morning and at night. That's the primary stop for the school bus. And there's nothing there. Does that make sense? I don't think so.
Arthur, let me stop you there for a minute, okay? So we have a traffic advisory committee that we rely on. No one here, sitting at this table, is a traffic engineer. We're not expertise in current traffic rules and regulations. They're changing constantly. Now, is it a possibility that the regulations for crosswalks have changed since you moved in there? I don't know. But I would offer you this, and offer you an invitation to sit down and make your presentation to our traffic advisory committee. And they're the people that will have some answers for you. Arthur, I'm afraid, we just don't know. It's just not our area of expertise. We rely heavily on our engineers.
I go around the whole town and take the same type of picture that you have there.
Right.
But I didn't do that. I was shocked when, yeah, I'm driving down Wind Street every day. I thought, oh, I'm driving twice a week. And I didn't see the signs. That's my fault. That's my stupidity. Oh, I used to read the internet, okay? Because I don't pay attention. People in traffic are supposed to pay attention. They put up the signs. I know where all those signs came. I just left Amherst a week ago. They're plastered all over Amherst, just as well. So it's obvious the state sponsored program. When I get something, Arthur, look at Wind Street. How many crosswalks do you see on Wind Street? You see one. That's down by the highway. One crosswalk. People go in, and there's stores all through here. Mount Airv. Some of those, Mount Airv, one of the toughest intersections in this section of Wind Street. There's no lights, there's no crosswalks. It should have been years ago. Traffic is horrendous. So if you have a traffic group, they better get off their bikes and start looking at the town differently. Not to have a crosswalk on Wind Street is ridiculous. Kids cross and go to the store? They're not going to come down to the funeral home to get to a store.
Arthur, we get your point. We certainly get your point. We hear you loud and clear. Let me do this. We will assemble the traffic advisory committee, or the town administrator will. We will invite you to sit down with them. And maybe there's a reasonable explanation from them as to why they're starting...
There's no reason in this part of town. There's no reasonable explanation here.
I can't.
I had to fight to get stop signs put in 20 years ago. I had to paint my stop lines in my neighborhood, because they wouldn't paint stop lines. When we needed them, they wouldn't paint them in. So I painted them. It's still there. So there are some things that DPW does great, and I applaud them for it. But something like this is dangerous, because you get kids who, if they get hurt, you're in a soup position. You're telling people to cross in a very dangerous location. You're denying them the privilege here that you put on the other intersections.
Okay, like I said, Arthur, we get your point. We're going to make every effort to answer all of your questions and concerns with an invitation to meet with our traffic professional. We just don't have the expertise to...
But that's why, that's why you're in this ring. I have this, that's why I use the term, get up out of your chair and put it in the closet. You're never going to know what's going on if you sit in a chair.
All right, we have your...
You can come see me, Mr. Chairman. I'll arrange that meeting with the traffic folks.
Okay, very good. How's that?
When I leave here today, because of my neighbors' concerns, I'd like those two signs taken out. There's no need of them. It's a dead-end street. The other side, I'm not arguing about. I'm just asking, for the sake of the neighbors that are complaining to me, take those two out.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Arthur. And you want us to phone you, or you want to come in and see Paul sometime this week?
You're pretty new to DPW, aren't you?
No, I don't work for DPW.
Oh, I thought you did. Well, usually I...
He's right here. He's right across the hall.
Oh, I know.
Selectmen, okay.
I've been at the DPW many times.
All right, and we'll see you this week.
One of the people who run the department.
All right.
Because I, I think, when I go there, it's legit. I'm not looking for any...
I understand that. No, no, no.
Okay, thank you for your time.
And thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. I see it.
Call me on a meter.
Sherry Ellis, I see you have your hand up. You have something for citizens' time?
I do, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sherry Ellis, a town meeting member. I don't know if Arthur McDonald is still there or not. But I just want to let him know that, you know, Tom Hayes and the DPW have been working on a crosswalk plan over the last couple of years. And I've kind of worked with them. And he's certainly open to, you know, certain specific ones. They're kind of working on certain areas of the town center, working out towards the schools as well. And they're replacing the, and they have a, I believe they wanted to come and talk with you as well, a standard and a plan for crosswalks. They're really important. And I agree with Arthur McDonald that crosswalks are vital, and visibility of them. And I think they're coming up with a great plan. So hopefully, as Mr. Sagarino says, we can connect them, and they can get some resolution to his specific concerns. Thanks.
Good, very good. Thank you, Sherry. Anybody else citizens' time? I see none. Okay, we'll move on to item 237, Metropolitan Area Planning Council representative. This will be a new appointment for Mr. Sagarino. You want to take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have, the town of Burlington does have a seat on the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The board had previously appointed then-planning board member Spahoe to that position. He's no longer interested in providing that role for the town. But he was kind enough to find us another volunteer. Perhaps he, I don't know if you want to elaborate on the duties of that position, or...
No, I think it's a very important role. We, they meet a couple of times a year. But I think it's better suited for a planning board member. It is the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And they, it just, I think, having a planning board member on there, more in tune with the stuff they're working on and new stuff coming down the pike, I think is better synergy. And I think all along, it was meant for a planning person. And Melissa Tentakalos is our alternate member. She does go to most of the meetings as well. I see her name in the meeting. But I talked to Barbara LaRue, and she was interested in taking my place on the, as our representative for the committee.
You'd like to make a motion to that?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint Barbara LaRue to Burlington's representative, to the MAPC.
In a second?
Second.
Anything further on the motion? Anybody? Bing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. There you go. Congratulations, Barbara, and thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Item, item 238, civil rights coordinator. Okay, Paul, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, we did receive $1 million worth of federal funding towards the town's Mill Pond Treatment Plan for the PFAS upgrades. As the Public Works has been filling out the very voluminous paperwork to get our hands on that funding, we were, we became aware that one of the criteria in order to receive that funding from the Environmental Protection Agency is that the town have a civil rights coordinator on our staff. I was able to speak to our HR director, Joanne Faust. She does handle that responsibility for the school department as well. So she'd be willing to be our civil rights coordinator, which would allow us to satisfy that portion of the application process. So what I would like to request is that the board, I wish to appoint Joanne Faust as the Town of Burlington's civil rights coordinator, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period. And if the board were to make that motion, we'll be in compliance with one of the many criteria that we need to in order to access that funding, so.
Thank you. Explained it quite well. Okay, so the motion to approve Joanne Faust's deposition and waive the 15-day...
So moved.
By Jim.
Second.
Second by Joanne. Further discussion from the board?
Just a silly question, if I may.
Yes.
It might come as a question, it might come as a comment. I don't know where I'm at right now. So I'm just going to say, do we feel like, I mean, our HR department is two people, servicing the town and the schools. It's a lot of people to be managing with a two-person HR. I'm not saying we should just willingly expand the department. But like, I'm all in favor of doing this, getting a million dollars and making sure we have a civil rights coordinator. But I also want to make sure that we're not overtaxing Joanne or that department. And that if we do need to expand into a third body for that role, that we are looking into it. That's all.
I appreciate that. And that's something that we look at every year when we put the budget together in our discussions with the HR department. It is very unusual for one HR department to service the town and the schools. We're very unique in that regard. And it's served the town well over the years. In many communities, they have entirely separate departments for town and schools. And Joanne and her team have, you know, performed remarkably... and her team have, you know, performed remarkably in doing quite, as you mentioned, quite a bit of work, but it is something we review every year during the budget process, and we'll do so again this year.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Anything further on the? Are we already going to, I'm kind of losing.
Yeah, we have a motion.
We have a motion, and a second, okay. Anything further? Big none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Item 239, approval of updated taxi livery policy. Paul, I'll go back to you then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in an effort to continuously look at the many various policies of our office that have been around for many years and perhaps not updated, our office staff, led by Lynn and Kim Piggott, have been working with also the police department, who also had a role in the licensing of taxicabs and livery services. So we're able to combine our heads and our thought processes and just sort of update a policy that makes sense and represents, you know, sort of what our select board office's responsibilities are, as well as the police department's end of it, and we're just requesting that the board approve this update, and we'll be able to move it forward as another policy that's been recently reviewed and looked at and modernized here. I'm not sure if there's any questions on the policy that anyone would like answered.
I don't think I've ever seen our policy. I kind of, I kind of wish we had maybe redlined where the revisions were. Looking at it, I can't tell right now, but.
Now, we can certainly do that and bring it back to you.
I was just kind of curious what, where the changes were, if it's not inconvenient to do that.
No, not at all.
You're going to wait till our next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anybody, anybody okay with that?
No, I'm in full agreement with you.
Yeah, that's fine. I do have a quick question.
Sure.
The $50 fee is a standard fee and goes to where?
Comes back to the town.
Okay.
Our license, we have a fee schedule that we're looking to compare to other towns, come back to the board if it needs to be increased or not.
Okay.
Anything further? Anybody? Yes, go ahead, Joe.
I'd just like to thank him because I can see it's all numbered in in the alphabetical order instead of Roman numbers. I really like that a lot, so I'm going to go to Section 4, Number D, proposed hours of operation. What it, this, that's one of the questions I had, and it wasn't a big deal, so I thought I could ask it tonight. What is, I just don't understand.
So.
I don't understand what that means, that's all.
I think that they, I mean, essentially, they're setting their own hours.
Yeah, their own hours, okay.
Yeah.
That's it. That's great. Thank you so much.
Police department had a lot to do with it.
There is, that is.
Because they, after the actual license is approved by you guys, they pretty much take over from there to make sure that they've got licenses, their quarries have been run, they have active registrations, and then they issue the actual IDs.
It made for interest your meeting this weekend, so just thank you so much for that.
Anything further? All right, we'll take this up at our next session. All right, item 240, approval of police station building committee. Paul, let me start with you then, huh?
Sure. At our previous meeting, we had made a, I had made a potential proposal for a police station building committee. Just to remind everybody, this is, the purpose of this committee is to advise the select board and the town administration on all issues related to the initiative to build a new facility for the Burlington Police Department. We're really anxious to get started with the process and begin meeting as a group and bring the designer in and just get our, get our process moving forwards towards next May's town meeting. So my original proposal, and I know the board, I had thought maybe it was a little too big, but we had two members from the select board, two members from the planning board, one member from the zoning bylaw review committee, one member from Ways and Means, a member from capital budget, a member from the land use committee, and then up to potentially five just residents of Burlington. So that was my original proposal, and I know that the board had indicated that they had some ideas at that time as to what they would see, like to see the committee constituted as. So with that as an opening, I guess I would put it back to the board to provide us with some more feedback on that, and if we're able to get there tonight, I'd like to get a couple of members approved tonight if possible.
That's what I was actually hoping to, I was hoping to start with that. We've got, we've advertised this quite extensively. We got a response from four local residents, most of which, you guys should be familiar with the names, most of these folks that have applied. Can we deal with that separately? Why don't we, I guess I'd be looking for a motion to appoint these four applicants that have taken the time out and just sent in their applications. Can we start with that? Do you have any objections or concerns or regards to the?
Mr. Chairman, we're.
Who are we going to go with, all four?
All four? Because that makes it an even number.
Right, so I would propose, and maybe go so far as to make a motion that we approve the committee list, the proposal of the committee, all the words came right out of my head, the proposed committee, but I would reduce the resident number down to three, keeping it an odd number for any subsequent votes that may occur, even though it's just an advisory Sounds like everyone's thrilled about that idea.
Well, listen, I mean, all four people, how do you, how do you leave one person off? Go ahead, Joe, thank you.
So this is, this is the committee. We got two select, two, we all know what it is for the residents, it's two select board members, two planning, zoning view bylaw committee, Ways and Means Committee, capital budget, land use, and five residents. One, 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 two and two. I've said this before, I'll say it again, this is an advisory committee. They're going to go in, they're going to advise, they're going to come back to us. We have the final say. So at this point, I was against having this many people on it. I was just thinking, one of the first ones that called Paul and said, you know what, hey, this is crazy, too many people. It's an advisory committee. They're going to come back to us, they're going to advise us what they think. We have the final say. So put 32 on there. Doesn't matter. You know what I mean? It doesn't, you get so many people in this committee that it is going to come back, no one's ever going to come up with the same scenario of like, okay, this is what I want, this is what I want. It's even harder with the five of us have to come up with something.
Right.
So it's harder for just the five of us have to do something, or the planning board with, how many members are on the planning board? Seven?
Seven.
Seven members on the planning board. There's always the controversy going on. So let them sit down, let them figure it out, let them go with it, come back to us, talk to us. Hopefully, we're all on the same page as far as getting a new police station. That's the bottom line, is to get a new police station, to have everybody on board, everybody on the same page, at least on the, in the same book.
Yep.
All right, so I agree. I'm okay with this, and I wasn't in the beginning.
I agree, because I also was not okay with it. The place I'm coming from, because I agree with Paul and what Paul had said before, that like, we want to be inclusive of, you know, as many folks as we really can, but with the caveat that we can still have an effective advisory committee, right? I think that like, 32 is definitely too many. Right? Good. You know, I mean, you know, is 13 too many? Maybe not. I just, I want them to be effective. And so I guess like, we can say, yeah, you know, take five to four, put them on because of their enthusiasm, and in some cases, their past experience with, you know, building committees, which is fantastic, you know, keep everyone here so that, you know, there's transparency and visibility and everyone's sharing thoughts. That's great. I just, I hope it goes well. That's all. That's my, just my concern.
Well, I think, I think, but I think that's going to be up to whoever chairs that committee, to make sure that that committee doesn't get out of hand, to make sure that committee doesn't get to a point where they're barking at each other and talking back and talking over each other and doing that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Just like it is here with us, you know? Our chairman says to us, that's enough, you stop. End of story. We've seen other committees in town, and it's been going on for years where someone thinks that they can just keep going, you know, and it's not the right thing to do. You're in a public setting, you're in a public committee. This is for, the best for the town of Burlington, let's figure out what it is.
Yep.
Right, so if there's got to be that many on there, I'm in favor of that.
Paul, would you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to suggest, I know that all the board members are, you know, excited about the police station project as well, so what we can do is we can, we can post a select board meeting at the same time, and then we could just remove two select board members from this committee, and just anybody, any of you that wishes to attend any of these meetings could. If you all wanted to attend them all, you could as well. We can make sure it's a legal posting, so the select board meeting is posted for the same time as the police station, and then if all five of you chose to show up at that time, that would not be an issue either, so.
This would be a special select board meeting, correct? It wouldn't be an agenda item on our regularly scheduled meeting.
Correct. You would just be able to attend that meeting and be able to participate. It would not occur at this meeting.
Gotcha.
That committee may come back to this forum to discuss something with the board, but in terms of attending the grind, day-to-day meetings or bi-weekly meetings of the building committee, any of you could come whenever it was convenient for you and not have to worry about there being too many members or a quorum or anything like that.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just want to keep it at an odd number in case the committee does have to take a vote to come to the select board or something that you have, you don't have a deadlock tie, just to keep it at an odd number.
Let me, let me, let me recommend this then. We, the town administration was recommending five residents. Right now, we only have four. Why don't we appoint these four and continue to advertise for that position, fifth seat on that committee, rather than try and whittle down out of the four fine people, and I would feel terrible to have to pick and choose and leave someone out.
Let's just devolve on that. We're always encouraging people to join, so let's, I agree, let's try and get that fifth person. And if I may?
Yeah.
Again, just as has been stated, we all, it's all going to come to us anyway, but if, if two members of this board, the select board, have to be on it, I would withdraw my request so that there is no issue, but that's only if we're still at, on the list.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Please. Jim, you're the last one I want to see withdraw. You were in that building for 105 years, so you're the last one that I want to.
Just trying to look out what's best for the town.
I remember when you went to school there, you know?
That's not that, I'm not that old.
I just want to make sure that you're on that committee. How many degrees did you spend in that building?
Um.
I'll withdraw myself, I'll just go when I have to, whenever I want to.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I like the fact that we can, to Paul's point, list it as a joint meeting, and any of us can go, but I do want the two of us to be the two people that are consistently there and a part of the conversation. So I think if we were, if we were flexing that, that could create a lot of inconsistency in the conversation. If no one else has a problem with the full vote, then, you know, let's just go with it. I just, I pray that it's a well-managed committee.
That's up to, that's up to the chair. Will there be a chairman, Paul? Excuse me. Will there be a chairman?
Typically, typically, there's a chairman, yes.
Okay. Would that be a select board member, or you, or Mr. Denizio?
And the previous ones that we've been involved here, the administration has sort of run the meetings along with the designer.
That's what we did with the last two.
Correct.
Last two, the last two committees I was on for the building with the DPW and the rec. department, and Mr. Petrin was in charge of those meetings.
Okay.
He did very, very well with those, very, very well, and I'm sure Paul will do a better job.
That, that gives me more comfort, you know, so that's, that's fine by me.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we approve these, we approve these four tonight, right?
I would, I would like, I would like us to approve the four applicants, and I want to get to Mr. Priest's point that he feels that two select board members should still be in some way, shape, or form be liaison or something like that. We can, we can discuss those positions a little, at a later date, maybe Wednesday.
Okay. If I may, Joe, I really appreciate that. I, you know.
Oh, really? Not that, not that, a couple of jokes I threw in there, but no, you were there a very long time. Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question about the rest of the planning board review committees? We got to just keep those in there, or we got to?
My understanding.
We got to vote on everybody tonight except for the two select board members, correct?
Let's carve the select board out of it for the time band until we, we'll have, we will have a couple of liaison members.
And then everyone can go when they want to.
But it'd still be a special, it'd still be considered a special select board meeting when this group meets and all eligible to attend, participate, and share information amongst.
So a question to confirm for Paul, is that all the names here are good to go? Like, they've all, or should we just approve?
The names here are listed as good to go, provided for, provided to me by those individual committees, as those folks that were interested in being on this committee to represent those boards, and then you have your four residents.
Right.
You were provided separately.
So we can, we can vote to create the committee and then appoint everybody whose name has been provided, withholding the two select board seats and the fifth resident seat, which we'll continue to advertise for?
Absolutely, and the only other thing I would ask is if the board could just vote the purpose or mission statement for the committee, and it's listed on here as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, Jim.
Well, if Joe's withdrawing, I think Mike and I are the only other two, so why would we delay that? Is there a reason to delay that?
But that's, I mean, that's being decided.
Just asking.
Is that what you had in mind, or do you want to discuss it a little bit?
I'm fine with that. It's like I said, it's an advisory committee, and it's all going to come back to us anyway, and the two selectmen that are on there, I have all the faith in the world in them, and I could call either one of them up anytime, or I could sit in on the meeting if I want to. You know, a lot of the stuff that I, when I ran my campaign nine years ago that I wanted to be involved in, but where it's just an advisory committee, I'm okay with this because the final say comes from us and what we want, and hopefully, very much transparency will come through as this committee's put together, that we know all the facts going on. So I'm okay with it.
I'm sure we'll be kept well apprised of.
Yeah.
All right, then, let's take, let's take the whole package, okay? Take the whole package tonight.
So then, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion.
With the, with the purpose?
I'm going to, yeah, so it's going to be a motion to approve the proposed committee as provided by Mr. Sagarino, including Mr. Españo, Mr. Tigas, and the four residents who have applied, as well as the purpose provided to us in writing. So it covers the committee creation, the purpose, and the appointments, all in one motion, and then we can search for our elusive fifth resident at a later date.
Okay, you want to, do you have the four names of the folks?
It was Mike Kelly, Bob Hogan.
Manu Sepredini.
Manu Sepredini. Manu Sepredini, and who was the fourth one?
Mr. Renzulli.
Yes.
Don't guess, Paul, it's a motion.
It's something.
Put the wrong guy in, guess him.
While Lynn's just checking on that last name, if it's okay, from the planning board, we had Barbara LaRue and Brenda Rappaport. From zoning bylaw review, we had Kathy Byer. Ways and Means was Mike Hardy. Capital Budget Committee is Gary Caskey. Land Use Committee was Dan Tietucci Jr.
Be on all of us to recruit one more resident.
And from the select board, select man, select man Españo, select man Tigas.
Joseph Renzala.
Renzala.
Joseph Renzala.
I knew that, I knew that.
Number four. There we go.
Okay, so we have a motion from Nick. Anything further on this? Big none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. There we go. And you'll, you'll be reaching out to all of these folks following, letting the...
Ah, yes, sir.
Good people know when you're going to muster?
Yep.
Very good, very good.
You don't have to reach out to me and Jimmy, we heard it.
You don't have to reach out to me and all of them.
Oh, goodness, all righty, all right, well, I'm glad we got that done. Okay, very good. Item 241, Approval Minutes from our regular session of September 11 and, and October 23rd.
Make a motion to approve the minutes on 9/11/23 and 10/23 of 23.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Nick. Any, anything further from the board, ever the mission? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero, favor of the minute. The subcommittee reports, where did I start last time? Did I start down there, really? I forget.
I got nothing this week, so.
Nick's been away.
Yeah, I got nothing.
I'm not sure if he has anything.
No.
All right, Mike.
I'd like to, for my report, commend the police department, my subcommittee, for the, running the, the I Love You Guys, the briefing symposium. Last week was November 2nd and 3rd, and it was a, it's a nationally recognized symposium for school safety, and I went over, I was just going to pop in last Friday, the 3rd, for just a, for flavor, but I ended up staying three hours. It's very well done, it's very thorough, some of the conversations and topics were difficult to hear, and it, it's unfortunate that in this day and age, we have to have these type of conversations, but it, it's comforting to know that Glenn Mills and the, our four, men and women on our police force are ahead of the curve when it comes to this stuff, and I mean, the amount of people in that room at the Escadrill, there was over 200 people, from people all over the continent. I end up speaking to a woman from, from Dallas and a gentleman from Virginia, and I was just, and outside in the parking lot, we're just cruisers from all around the area, and a lot of our school administration was there, a couple of our school committee members were there, Melissa Massardo and Martha Simon were there, it was good to see all of our principals there, and it's, it's good, I mean, it's good that we're having the conversation, not good we're having the conversation, but good we're having the conversation, and it was pretty cool that we had that right here in Burlington, and it, it, just credit to our, our police force for doing that, it's just important, important stuff.
Good report, thank you. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
Just real quick, I just want to go over the hunting again, like I always do. This is the season, they are out there bow hunting. If you do see someone out there walking with a bow and arrow through the woods, they have to have a tag with them, so just ask for the tag, and that's registered through the town, just to make sure everything's on the up and up. There are tree stands out there, so just wear some orange and be careful. I've never been in an accident with bow hunting ever, so knock on wood, and we, we like to keep it that way.
Good, thank you very much. Briefly, a few, few items caught my eye leading up to the Veterans Day event on our beautiful town common on, on Saturday. One of the local news stations caught my eye, there's a, we have a good a school teacher here at the Burlington High School who had, some time ago, had the idea of, of a book drive and collecting books for veterans, and she's been very successful in that endeavor, she's handing these books out to soldiers and sailors homes, et cetera, and getting them in the hands of these guys. It's been, it's been very successful, and it's nice to know, right here at the high school. Also, P Cat did a nice little piece on the American Legion Riders, who surprised a lot of folks down at the Shaw supermarket one day last week. They were, any veterans they spotted going through the, through the checkout line, they stepped up and paid for their, their grocery bills, so kudos to the American Legion Riders. And again, I don't know, 10, 12 years in a row, I, I've lost count, but our good friends at Tuscan Kitchen, again, served a free lunch to any veteran in the Burlington Bedford area, and we also want to thank Rick Parker from the Chamber of Commerce and his crew, they're always on hand to, to assist, as well as State Representative Ken Gunn. Same folks year after year, year in, year out. The owner and his, all of his children and wife were there, as they are every year, to greet every single person that comes in and has dinner at their location. Like, I believe there's 14 years, consecutive years that they've been doing this at, at all of their locations. So thanks again to our, our friends at Tuscan Kitchen. That's all I have. Mr. Sagarino, to you.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to commend Veterans Office, Chris Hannafin and Jen Goldsmith for another beautiful Veterans Day ceremony. Burlington High School Band and, you know, the Boy Scouts and all the other, and it was a huge turnout over on the common, so it really was a fantastic morning, and they outdo themselves every time, so it's really a, a wonderful, a wonderful day to be in Burlington for that ceremony, so just kudos to them.
All right, good. Thank you very much. John, Lynn, you got anything to add?
No. Just that, look.